We have a fun evening.
Recording in progress.
Over the next few minutes. For some of you that know me, this will be repeating myself. For those that don't, my name is Ed Gormley. There's a little plaz- (audience laughs) a little plaz out here with my name on it. I had the honor and privilege of serving eight years on the planning commission, which I always called the apprenticeship program for the city council. Two terms on the city council, then 24 years as mayor. And that was a special time for Candy and I, especially with the mayor's ball. I'm sure some of you can remember that crazy event that we nicknamed a plumber's prom. And it was Candy's way of getting even with me for not dancing with her in college and that. So, anyway, I'm- I've got the honor of being able to swear in our new councillors, our mayor, and our police chief. And so where's the chief hiding at?
I'm gonna name that.
Oh, my God, okay. I'm not- so, chief, I'd love to bring you greetings from your father-in-law, but he wouldn't answer my phone call today. Does everyone know the history of his family here? His father-in-law was our police chief while I was mayor. And it was McFarland days that some of you well remember and that. So he was a great guy, helped us basically hire Ron Noble and that. I understand you've been kind of poisoned by Waldo Farnham, but we'll take that into account. Anyway, if you look at this cake, it doesn't say Chief Wood on it. I ordered it a week ago, not aware that you were going to be sworn in tonight, so I apologize for that, but it still tastes the same. So, chief, you want to come on up? So everyone knows, we have two copies of these documents. One is for the councillor, the chief, the mayor, for them to preserve as a historic item. I'll let you hang on to that. And the other is for our records here at City Hall. So if you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. This is the kind of typical thing that you well know about. So, "I Cord Wood..."
"I Cord Wood."
"...the undersigned, having been appointed..."
"The undersigned, having been appointed..."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Police Chief..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Police Chief."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...that I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"...and the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"...and the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter and ordinances..."
"...and the charter and ordinances."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"...of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will, I will..."
"That I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform the duties of the office of police chief..."
"Faithfully perform the office of police chief."
"...the duties of the office..."
"Duties of the office of police chief."
...I was a mouthful. "...of the city of McMinnville..."
"...of the city of McMinnville."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"...during my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
My friend, you are sworn in, and we just need to sign this. Congratulations.[185.84][185.84](audience cheering) Chris was re-elected. Please raise your right hand, Chris, and repeat after me. "I, Chris Chenoweth..."
"I, Chris Chenoweth."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected to..."
"Having been elected to..."
"...the office of McMinnville City Councillor..."
"The office of McMinnville City Councillor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter and ordinances..."
"And the charter and ordinances."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"...of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform..."
"Faithfully perform."
"...the duties of the office..."
"The duties of the office."
"...councillor Ward One..."
"...of councillor Ward One."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"...of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I have been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Chris Chenoweth.[324.12][324.12](audience cheering) Chris Chenoweth. You both need to sign that. All right. Chris, congratulations one more time.[329.12][329.12](audience cheering) Councillor T., Mr. Toholski, right?
Sort of, kind of, yeah.[332.12][332.12](audience laughing)
Anyway, it's almost as bad as trying to pronounce Gormley or Garmley. So, welcome, and we're going to swear you in tonight.
Thank you.
So please, repeat after me. "I, Dan Toholski..."
"I, Dan Toholski."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected to the office..."
"Having been elected to the office."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...councillor..."
"Councillor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter..."
"And the charter."
"...and the ordinances of the city of McMinnville..."
"And the ordinances of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform..."
"Faithfully perform."
"...the duties of the office of councillor Ward Two..."
"Of the office of councillor Ward Two."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Chris Chenoweth. Next, Scott Cunningham, would you come on forward, please?[381.12][381.12](audience cheering) So, Scott, welcome, and all I can say is I miss your other place of business that had breakfasts and stuff.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so Scott, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Scott Cunningham..."
"I, Scott Cunningham."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected..."
"Having been elected."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Councillor..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Councillor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter..."
"And the charter."
"...and the ordinances of the city of McMinnville..."
"And the ordinances of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform..."
"Faithfully perform."
"...the duties..."
"The duties."
"...of the office of councillor Ward Two..."
"Of the office of councillor Ward Two."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
You are sworn in.
Thank you.[430.12][430.12](audience cheering)
Once again, congratulations. Thank you for your work.[433.12][433.12](audience cheering) Next, Scott Cunningham, would you come on forward, please?[435.12][435.12](audience cheering) So, Scott, welcome, and all I can say is I miss your other place of business that had breakfasts and stuff.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so Scott, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Scott Cunningham..."
"I, Scott Cunningham."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected..."
"Having been elected."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Councillor..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Councillor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter..."
"And the charter."
"...and the ordinances of the city of McMinnville..."
"And the ordinances of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform..."
"Faithfully perform."
"...the duties..."
"The duties."
"...of the office of councillor Ward Two..."
"Of the office of councillor Ward Two."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
You are sworn in. Congratulations. Once again, congratulations. Thank you for your work.[486.12][486.12](audience cheering) Next, Scott Cunningham, would you come on forward, please?[488.12][488.12](audience cheering) So, Scott, welcome, and all I can say is I miss your other place of business that had breakfasts and stuff.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so Scott, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Scott Cunningham..."
"I, Scott Cunningham."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected..."
"Having been elected."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Councillor..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Councillor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter and ordinances..."
"And the charter and ordinances."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform the duties..."
"Faithfully perform the duties."
"...of the office of mayor..."
"Of the office of mayor."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Okay. The lady that started all this.[535.12][535.12](audience cheering) So, once again, thank you for asking me to do this. The only other mayor I've done this for was Rick Olson, who succeeded me. So that was a fun time, and it's going to be a fun time for you.
Thank you.
So, Kim, I'd like you to place your hand on the Bible, your right hand, or actually, hold your right hand up, affirm on the Bible.
Thanks.
We have a Bible in front of us.
I'll just hold it.
Okay.
This is the family Bible, correct? So it's kind of a treasure.
Anyway, thank you, Michael. "I, Kim Morris..."
"I, Kim Morris."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected..."
"Having been elected."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Mayor..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Mayor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter and ordinances..."
"And the charter and ordinances."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Chris Chenoweth. Next, Scott Cunningham, would you come on forward, please?[602.66][602.66](audience cheering) So, Scott, welcome, and all I can say is I miss your other place of business that had breakfasts and stuff.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so Scott, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Scott Cunningham..."
"I, Scott Cunningham."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected..."
"Having been elected."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Councillor..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Councillor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter..."
"And the charter."
"...and the ordinances of the city of McMinnville..."
"And the ordinances of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform..."
"Faithfully perform."
"...the duties of the office of councillor Ward Two..."
"Of the office of councillor Ward Two."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
You are sworn in. Congratulations. Once again, congratulations. Thank you for your work. Next, Scott Cunningham, would you come on forward, please?[652.66][652.66](audience cheering) So, Scott, welcome, and all I can say is I miss your other place of business that had breakfasts and stuff.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so Scott, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Scott Cunningham..."
"I, Scott Cunningham."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected..."
"Having been elected."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Mayor..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Mayor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter and ordinances..."
"And the charter and ordinances."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform..."
"Faithfully perform."
"...the duties of the office of councillor Ward Three..."
"The duties of the office of councillor Ward Three."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Chris Chenoweth. Next, Scott Cunningham, would you come on forward, please? So, Scott, welcome, and all I can say is I miss your other place of business that had breakfasts and stuff.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so Scott, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Scott Cunningham..."
"I, Scott Cunningham."
"...the undersigned..."
"The undersigned."
"...having been elected..."
"Having been elected."
"...to the office of McMinnville City Mayor..."
"To the office of McMinnville City Mayor."
"...on oath..."
"On oath."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...and the laws of the United States..."
"And the laws of the United States."
"...and the state of Oregon..."
"And the state of Oregon."
"...and the charter and ordinances..."
"And the charter and the ordinances."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability."
"...faithfully perform the duties..."
"Faithfully perform the duties."
"...of the office of mayor..."
"Of the office of mayor."
"...of the city of McMinnville..."
"Of the city of McMinnville."
"...to which I've been elected..."
"To which I've been elected."
"...during my continuance therein..."
"During my continuance therein."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Okay. You keep that?
Okay.
And in honor of the councillors and the chief and that, we have cake. And Claudia, I should have got something quite the size based on the groups.
(audience laughing)
But I know the officers, they...
They like big groups.
Anyway, so, we're going to- the council meeting starts at 7 o'clock sharp. Madam Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
So, we have a little bit of a reception here to celebrate the council, existing council, celebrate the chief, and all of us to be a community together. So, thank you for being here tonight. It's been an honor to be here, to be able to do this. Thanks for being here.
(audience cheering) I'm not sure if you can have the cake, but I would like to ask the members to come down and give a picture. It's 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 a picture. I'm not sure if you can have the cake, but I would like to ask the members to come down and give a picture. It's 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 a picture.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
I don't do selfies.
I know, while we're doing this, so.
I'm terrible at it, but somebody else has to do it.
Everyone, time to sit down and let's go meeting.
Tammy, are you ready Claudia? Are we ready? I want to call the meeting to order. It's seven o'clock. Counselors, can you make sure your mics are on, bent down, and you're going to talk into them, please?
Check.
Claudia, can you please do a roll call?
Absolutely.
Counselor Cunningham?
Here.
Counselor Tokolski?
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Still third.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Good evening.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
And Mayor Morris?
Here.
Yay. And if you're able to stand, if you could please join us for the pledge, and I'm going to have Counselor Geary lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is sacred, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item of business is going to be the election of the council president, and I'm going to call on David Lichtenberg, the city attorney, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. All I am going to present is section nineteen of the charter related to president of the council, which I will read to you in full. At its first meeting, after this charter takes effect, and thereafter, at its first meeting of each odd numbered year, the council shall elect a president from its membership. In the mayor's absence from a council meeting, the president shall preside over the council. Whenever the mayor is unable to perform the functions of his office, the president shall act as mayor, reside over council deliberations, have authority to preserve order, enforce the rules of the council, determine the order, determine the order of business under the rules of the council, and continue to vote as a councilman.
Well done.
That's it.
Okay. So does any counselor want to make a nomination for council president?
Sorry, Mayor, the paragraph before that I thought was yours, but I'll read that if you would like me to.
Sure.
All right.
I don't have that, it's mine.
We will now undertake the election of the council president. We will begin with nominations. Any counselor may nominate any other counselor. A counselor may nominate themselves. Nominations do not have to be seconded. If a counselor is nominated but does not wish to be considered for council president, that counselor may decline the nomination. When the nominations appear to have stopped, I will call for any more nominations. When I hear no additional nominations forthcoming, I will close the nominations. When I say "I," that was supposed to be the mayor, and I should have changed that in my head. Thank you. The mayor will then read the names of the nominees. Each counselor will vote for one nominee by name. If one counselor receives a majority of the vote, the mayor will declare the result of the vote. If no counselor receives a majority, the counselors will vote again. We will continue this process until one counselor receives a majority of the vote. No nominee may be dropped from consideration unless they voluntarily withdraw themselves from consideration.
Okay. Now, does any counselor want to make a nomination for council president?
Mayor, I would. In keeping with the long tradition of honoring sort of seniority and time served, and for my admiration and defer, and of this person's deference on the position, and I think Sal Peralta would be my nomination for council president. I think this person is a great humble servant and is a good steward of the city of McMinnville. So I think for council president, I would like to nominate Sal Peralta.
Do I have any other nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to make a nomination for Counselor Chenoweth. Reason is because he also is a good steward of the city of McMinnville, as are many individuals up here, and I believe that while seniority should be respected, the city has also asked for a bit of a different direction, and I think that that direction could be provided by Counselor Chenoweth as council president.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare the nominations to be closed. We have Sal Peralta and Chris Chenoweth. Claudia Cisneros, could you take a?
And you'll just state the nominee's name, and that's how we'll start first. Counselor Cunningham?
Sal Peralta.
Counselor Tokolski?
Chris Chenoweth.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Chris Chenoweth.
Counselor Payne? I don't know. Can you come back to me? Counselor Geary?
Sal Peralta.
Counselor Peralta? Counselor Payne?
Sal Peralta.
With a majority of four to two, we have Counselor Peralta.
Congratulations. Next, we have comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the chat button, and our city recorder will reach out to you. Once you turn, once it's your turn, once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Please announce your name and the city you live in for the record. We will start with those who have preregistered. Claudia, do we have anybody?
Yes, we'll start with Jeff Kaiser.
Mr. Kaiser? Come on up, it's your turn. Welcome, Mr. Kaiser.
Number one, I'm looking forward to your term as mayor. You've inherited a couple of albatrosses, but you will see your way through, and I'm just darn proud that you're our new mayor leading us.
Thank you.
I just have one issue that I want to bring up, that some of you older council people will be well aware of. And this was a couple of years ago, the city council had overspent their budget and needed to cover expenses, so they came up with, I think it, on the water and light bill, it's called a city service charge. I would like you to look it up in the, the minutes of the meeting that that was done, and see if there was a timeline attached to it, attached to it, because it's still in force. And I would also like to have everybody in this room understand that it's on a utility bill, but it is not a utility bill. It's a service charge which actually is a property tax, which is deductible on your, year end to the Internal Revenue Service, but nobody saves these, because it's just a utility bill. This charge should be mailed on its own, so people understand that that is a deductible charge. They set this fee for all housing in McMinnville, and just in the last two years, it would surprise all of us, including me, how many additional houses have been built and brought online to this charge, to how much this creates for income every year. And this wasn't, this was just put on all the citizens, wherever you live, that you're in the city, you're paying it. This is still being charged on our water and light bill. I would like to know in public for how long. And I would also like to know in public how much this brought in for income in the first year, and how much in the second year, and I don't know if we're in the third year or through it or what. Too many of these. The city is looking forward to several projects that are very important, but we don't need a council under your leadership overspending their budget, so they would be embarrassed enough to have to go put a service charge on all the citizens in the city, and then have it, put it in a utility bill. That's really all I have to say, and good luck to you. This will be an interesting year, a challenging year.
Sir, before you leave, excuse me, sir?
Mr. Kaiser?
Mr. Kaiser.
Kaiser, Mr. Kaiser, wait.
I have a hearing, Agent, sorry.
Okay, Counselor Tokolski would like to say something.
Yeah, ma'am, may I speak? So, would you please state the exact name of the fee which you're referring to? I want to make sure I've written this down correctly.
This is my current water and light bill, and on the backside of it, it says total city service charges.
Okay, that's all I needed, then. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
And do we have Mr. Kaiser's contact information? Okay, we will get you that information, okay? I will provide that information to you of what the term is and how much, okay? Claudia, do we have anybody else in?
Yes, next we have Michael Freeman.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am here to, as a citizen, but also as a, since two thousand and fourteen, I'm a member of the Friends of the Library and past president of the board of the Friends of the Library. And I'm here to urge you and perhaps beg you to fund the library's number one request, and that is for a security officer for the library. As you probably know, the Friends of the Library for, put up thirty-three thousand dollars this year as a pilot program, and I really appreciate the city putting in some additional monies to make that a full funding through the end of March. And the reason for this, of course, is because the library has been named either officially, unofficially, but it's become the de facto heating and cooling center. This is not what the library should be, in my opinion, but that's what it comes as, the only public place that's open, and it becomes the public restroom, of course, et cetera, et cetera, with the ensuing problems that that brings. And I've witnessed those problems in the library, and it doesn't make for a good setting for families with children, to bring their children to the library and encounter these types of problems, behavioral problems. It puts great stress on the library's staff, who are now becoming hall monitors, rather than doing the professional job that we ask them to do. So, this, this is an important thing for the library. It's, as you know, it's number one ask, and when the library has to make number one a security officer, rather than collections or something of that nature, that's, that shows you the, indicates the nature of the problem, of which I'm sure you're aware. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming, and I totally understand what you're talking about, and I know we will discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia? That's everyone that has preregistered.
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Nobody on Zoom or phone?
We have people on Zoom. No one has sent a chat.
All right. All right, so we'll move along here. So we're going to go to information items, reports from counselors on committee and boards, assignments. So, how should I, do I just? Just where I want to start on my own? Okay. Scott doesn't have anything. You don't, I'm so sorry. Zach, do you have anything?
Since the last meeting, DEIAC has met and had a good discussion, work around a new committee member onboarding packet, as well as work plan and for moving forward, and then went into sort of more of a work session and engaged in a goal setting of their own for the coming year to work through. So, had a, had a good, robust discussion, and in the next month, we should be seeing the, the fruits of that process come through, all related to previous goals and how we can move those forward again in the next year. So, that, I think, other than that, it's the only committee that's met since last time, so, thank you.
Thanks. Sal?
Thank you, Mayor. MCM eleven has not met since our last meeting, nor has CAG. Thank you.
Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. Landscape review meets tomorrow, and Lipsec doesn't meet again until next Wednesday, so I have nothing to report.
From Dan. So, and just before I go to departments, I want to let you know that the committees have been assigned, and I'll provide that to Claudia tomorrow, and they'll be typed up, and we'll actually assign those at the next council meeting. So now I'm going to go to department heads, and I'm going to start with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just a couple of things. First of all, for myself and for the executive team, just wanted to thank the council for their engagement and selfless gifting of a Saturday to the community to do your team building and goal setting last Saturday. We have not yet received a report from Julia Novak, who facilitated the session. We expect that relatively soon. Our plan is to likely schedule a work session in February to review the results of that, and then ultimately provide the council an option to finalize its council goals at a subsequent council meeting. Also note that a number of you had the opportunity to celebrate Matt Scales' career. I am fairly confident that I know what his favorite retirement gift is. As of yesterday, he became a grandfather. So congratulate Matt and Jill the next time you have contact with him. Nothing else to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you will probably know, over the past few years, the city has been the recipient of some of the monies with regard to opioid lawsuit and settlements. Those monies have come highly restricted, and their spending has been something of a challenge. We have been able to be in touch through a grant with a consultant who has a lot of expertise in training municipalities to spend dollars like this, and they are conducting some of those trainings in the very near future. You may have seen them pop up on your calendars already. The first one is particularly for elected officials, both city and county, and is going to take place electronically on January twenty-one from noon to two. That will not be a public meeting, and I would encourage you to attend, or to ensure that one or two of your body do attend, because that will be valuable. If not, that will also be recorded for everybody else's benefit. That specifically will be a high-level training for elected officials. However, following up on that, on February three, we're having a most of the day However, following up on that, on February 3, we're having a most-of-the-day meeting with those same consultants and with community partners who may be able to use funds like this, or who understand what the need in the community is and how those funds might be best spent. So the idea of that day is going to be really categorizing where the needs are, understanding where the needs are, and understanding what, how to get the best bang for your buck. Both of those will be largely informational, although the community meeting, the meeting on February 3 will be a meeting open to the public, because there will be some discussion about what the possibilities are and how the city might spend those monies that it does have.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Thank you. Two questions. So my first question is, how much in opioid settlement funds is in the budget unspent? And the sec, oh, sorry, I'll let you answer, if anybody knows.
I don't think I know off the top of my head. Former Finance Director Quayle had that number like that and started the discussions with these consultants. But I'm afraid I don't have it like that.
I think City Manager Towery's looking it up.
My other question is, is there a cost to the consultant? And if so, how much?
There is not. It was entirely grant-funded and by a grant that we did not have to seek.
Thank you. These will be added as a calendar invite once I get further details. David and I will connect on that.
So they haven't been added at this point?
This is calendars.
Jeff, are you close that I should? Okay, Director Richards?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Two things I wanted to share. We've been in a recruitment process for a planning manager. This is a new position for the city that was budgeted in this fiscal year. And I wanted to share with everyone that we made an offer, and it was accepted. David Bernicker is going to start as our new planning manager on February 3. He comes with a lot of private consulting experience, doing long-range planning with communities. And he was also the planning director for the city of Gresham for about 12 years, and has several other city municipal experience, too. So we're excited to bring him online. He's excited to work in McMinnville. He particularly applied for this job because he wanted to work somewhere. He's at the end of his career and wanted to work somewhere where he could really apply his skillsets to help a community retain its charm as it's going through growth. And that's a great match for what we're challenged with here. So we're excited to see him, have him join our team. And I'll bring him to a city council meeting so he can introduce himself. I also wanted to let you know, we, we did receive notice that we received the $500,000 Community Development Block Grant. We had applied for that. We thought we would receive it. It was going through budget process at the federal level. And we just got finished signing all the paperwork for that. It's a $500,000 grant to utilize in McMinnville over the next two years to provide funds to households of low and moderate income that need to make fixes to their homes to make them more habitable. So we're looking at things like ADA ramps for people who need ramps to access their homes, or leaking roofs, or windows, or insulation, or anything of that nature. We're contracting with the Housing Authority to administer the program. We are collecting applications from the community right now for those grant funds. So if anybody's interested, they can contact me, or they can contact the Housing Authority directly, and we'll get them in touch with the program itself.
And are those the funds that go rather quickly, if I remember?
They do go rather quickly. We already have a long list for them, but we are working with the Housing Authority to see if we can secure other funding sources if we exceed the $500,000. We want to make sure we're responding to people's needs. And previously, it was restricted to just manufactured homes, but this round is available to all, to all homes that are occupied by households making low and moderate income levels. And if somebody has a question if they qualify, I'd be happy to work with them on that as well.
Great.
Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
With the, the list of people that are trying to get part of that grant, is there an evaluation process of their need?
There's, there's a couple of qualifying criteria first that they need to meet relative to the grant funds themselves. And then it is based on a first-come, first-served process. If we do get, if we do get so many applications, we may have a discussion. I, I sit on the board of the authority that's overseeing these funds, and we could have a discussion about prioritizing the applications based on different additional criteria. We haven't had to do that yet, because we have worked hard to secure other funds to meet the needs, so.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? Nope? Director Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. Some of you may have heard a little piece of this, but we used to do, have a pretty robust day trip program that we ran out of the senior center. We would take a bus full of seniors up to the Zoo Lights, or Rose Garden, or the beach. And with the rising transportation costs, we were pretty much priced out of that market just because we couldn't make it work financially. And so Erin Gwynne, the manager at the senior center, was looking for grants. She applied for and received a $50,000 grant. And we are in the process of purchasing a 12-seat, two-wheelchair lift bus to bring to McMinnville. And we're really looking forward to being able to add that to our programs and hopefully get those back up and running.
City Manager Towery?
Mayor, do you have the answer to that question? Proposed budget last year, we identified collections through March of 2024 of about $312,000 in opioid settlement dollars.
Thank you. Jessica Settle? Okay. Our new chief, Chief Wood?
No updates for me this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Director Hedges?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Jeff?
Quick emergency management update. So for the last several months, we've been updating our emergency operations plan with a grant from OEM, the consultant's been helping us out with. We have the draft plan now. This Thursday, our executive team, and we're going to be joined by Chief Godfrey with the Fire District, we're going to be running through a tabletop exercise of the emerg, the executive team to see how the plan works, work out any bugs if they're in there. And then next week during your work session, our Emergence Manager, Jeff Jacobs, will be presenting that plan and also an update on the emergency management program to you all, so you can have any input and ask any questions on that plan before we bring it back to you at a future council date for adoption. That's it.
Thank you. Crystal, are you representing, or, okay, Scott Burke is?
Crystal's coming up later on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Turned here. Just a couple of quick things from the finance side. The audits for the city are done. The city and the Urban Renewal Agency, both back with clean opinions. Both have been submitted to the State of Oregon JFOA. Many thanks and kudos to our entire finance team for all the work that goes into that process, and especially our previous Finance Director, Jennifer Quayle, and Finance Administrator Rhonda Gretson, who worked many hours completing all those audit tasks. And we're working on getting an item on the council agenda for review in the near future on that, so look for that coming. And over in the mini-court side, we've hired a new clerk for the front, Alexi Evaldez. And Alexi is sitting up front at City Hall learning on the job, so say hi if you haven't stopped in yet. Thank you.
Assistant Recorder, Daniel?
I have nothing to report, but thank you.
Recorder, Claudia?
Just a reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday in observance of Martin Luther King Day, so we will be closed.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
When will we be required to do that public disclosure document that comes every year for the elected officials?
The SCI filing, I will kick off your first notification in February. Filing doesn't start until March, and it runs through April. So you will all be hearing from me soon about that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is to consider the request from Rippen Card Trick LLC for a limited on-premises OLCC liquor license located at 125 North Highway 99W. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, Councilor Geary, and a second by Councilor Payne. Any discussion? Claudia, can you take a role?
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tokolski?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councilor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Aye.
Nannosleep asked. Thank you.
Point of clarification. Do we need a roll call on procedural matters like consent agenda?
Yes. Going forward, we will be doing a roll call on everything.
Okay, I'm going to ask if any councillor would like to request to have any item removed from the... Nope, we're past that, so it's reversed. Sorry. Send it different. So now we have a resolution. To consider Resolution Number 2025-01, a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the city of McMinnville and Urban Renewal Committees. I'm going to call on Crystal Ulrich, Financial Analyst, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and city councillors. Resolution 2025-01 is consideration of appointments to the city and urban renewal budget committees. The, there are currently three vacancies on the budget committees. Two of these vacancies are from term expirations as of December 31, 2024, with appointments recommended for the complete three-year term. The third vacancy resulted from a budget committee member's appointment to city council. And it is recommended that the new appointee serve the remaining one-year term, which expires December 31 of this year, 2025. The committee vacancies were advertised during October and November of 2024 through multiple channels, including the News Register, the El Latino de Hoy publication, McMinnville Community Media's television feed, the city website, and iHeartMac. We received six applicants for the vacant positions, and interviews were conducted with all those applicants. Interviews took place December 19 and the 30. And the applicants met with former Mayor Drabkin, former Council President Garvin, former councillor Menke, and current Budget Committee Chair Maxfield. The following appointments are being recommended retrospectively. So appointment of Victoria Ernst for a three-year term to end December 31, 2027. A new appointment of Stephanie Frost for a three-year term to end December 31, 2027. And a new appointment of Kelly Bolden for a one-year term through this year of December 31, 2025. And Kelly has joined us in the audience here. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Meredith Maxfield has joined us.
Yes, I didn't see her come in. Okay, thank you.
So I ask for a motion to consider Resolution 2025-01.
So moved.
Councilor Cunningham, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Councilor Tokolski? Any council discussion? Claudia, can you please take a poll?
Love, before you do that, to have a little discussion on this. You know, we saw a pattern toward the end of last year of appointments being made that were being done in a way that I called out in the last meeting that we had of last year. When I look at this, we had on the, on the panel that made the recommendations, three of the members making these recommendations out of four aren't even on council or involved in city governance at this time. That's troubling to me. This, this should have taken place after they did their interviews on December 19 and December 30. There's no reason why they, these couldn't have waited until the new mayor was seated and the appointment process then handled by you. So I just have concerns. I don't have necessarily, I'm not speaking to the qualifications of the individuals mentioned here. But it, this, this pattern that occurred toward the end of last year of, of these appointments, I think is concerning. I, I'm leaning personally toward voting no and asking that we just start this process over and encouraging those folks that were selected to reapply, but have it follow a process that is set by the new mayor and not by the old one. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else have any comments? Claudia?
Councilor Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilor Tokolski?
Nay.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Nay.
Councilor Payne?
Stain.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Aye.
The resolution passed uni, or with a vote of three ayes, two nays, and one abstain.
So it passes. Okay. Now we're going to move on to Resolution 2025-02, a resolution appointing four members to the city's Airport Commission. We have Willie Williamson, I believe, on the phone to present for Zoom?
Yes, he's on Zoom, and I am electing him in. One second.
Willie, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Here we go. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thanks for having me on here. So this is the resolution to appoint four members on the Airport Commission. We, we ended up, we had two airport commissioners time out, end of their, their period, and then we had one member that moved out of state and a fourth member that resigned from the commission to seek an opportunity and volunteer with, with another entity. And so we ended up with, with four vacancies. We advertised for, for these vacancies since the beginning of October through the beginning of December. And then we, we ended up with six applicants and held interviews for all six of them. The people doing the interviews was Mayor Drabkin, Council President Garvin, and Airport Commissioner Herzog. And I was in attendance as staff. It was determined that, that Mr. Grayson should be reappointed for a second term and that Brian Young would be selected for a full term. Jake Voles, for the remainder, remainder of the, the remaining three years of a term, that was the, the person that went out of state. And Michael Warren to fill one year of the term that was vacated by the former chairman who resigned. And so anyway, it is for your consideration. I support, obviously, the decision of, of the interview panel.
Thank you. So I can put these all together again like I did on the Budget Committee? We can just vote on them all at one time? Okay, so we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to consider Resolution 2025-02.
So moved.
Zach, Councilor Geary, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Peralta? Any discussion on the dot?
Yeah.
Councilor Chenoweth?
I will make the same objection, that two of the three members of the panel interviewing this group are not members of the governmental body again. They should have waited, and this is no bearing on those that were selected, but we should not be pushing these through. They should be being put before the current mayor for her to put the position, decide how she wants to proceed. So, once again, I'll be voting no.
Thank you, I appreciate. Thank you. I appreciate your opinion. Anybody else?
I'll just share my...
Counselor Peralta?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I'll just share my perspective. I did not have a hand in interviewing any of the members for any of the committees that are coming up. However, I do feel comfortable with the process that was used. These application, the application period went from October through December, and within a few weeks of completing the application period, staff and the existing committees to review the applications did the interviews. These are not partisan appointments. They're volunteer positions with the city. I think we should respect the willingness of these residents to step forward and serve in these committees. A lot of times, cities can't even fill committees like this one, so I'm grateful both for the work that went into actively recruiting members to these committees, because during the last year, we did a lot more active recruitment than we had done previously in terms of putting information out in multiple channels that were mentioned earlier by staff. I do think that it's unfortunate that the integrity of the process is being called into question. I don't see these as necessarily analogous to the Water and Light Appointment, but just a standard process. So, and I hope we don't have to answer the same question for each of these four committees. I certainly understand Counselor Chenoweth's concerns, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Payne?
Thank you. I agree with what Counselor Peralta stated regarding these four individuals and others who have sought appointment on various committees, that it's critical to honor the time commitment that they're making and the process that they've already been through. I do not intend to vote no. However, I do feel like perhaps this is a time where we should mention the unified... Gosh, I'm so sorry. I don't remember the exact name of that document, but the Unified Committee Appointment Process, and that if this council desires to add an extra layer of one current councillor, you know, just making sure that one seated councillor is going to be doing those interviews. So I want to bring that to the attention, that we have a policy that we can amend. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other conversation?
I have... Yes, Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
So I agree with Counselor Payne. I would like to see some kind of an amendment to the process where outgoing councillors and/or perhaps even a mayor are not part of the selection process. The integrity of the process and the fact that a process was conducted, I have full faith in that part. It's just unfortunate to see the two people that are no longer up here are part of that process. Not that they didn't do a great job, because I'm sure they did. The challenge just means that we're not being represented as the elected... Those that elected us are being asked to be represented. I... If we could ask for an amendment, yes, I would choose to do so. That's all.
Thank you. I appreciate that, too, and I'm just going to say that I have talked to City Manager Towery about this myself. Again, has nothing to do with the people that were chosen. I think they were great choices. But I feel in the future, there should be, when there is a change in leadership, that that needs to be basically a shadowing position at the end and try to include them, because it is a change in leadership, and they should have an opportunity to be part of it. So it is a discussion we have had and will continue to have. So I appreciate everyone's opinion up here, and I appreciate you being respectful with it. So we do have a motion on the table, and I would like to know if... Claudia can take a poll.
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tokolski?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Nay.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Aye.
Resolution passed by a vote of five to one.
Thank you. Are any of these members in the room?
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I forgot to say congratulations to Kelly as well for previous... And, yeah. All right. We're going to move on now to Resolution 2025-03, a resolution appointing members to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. I call on City Manager Jeff Towery to present.
Thank you, Mayor, Minister of the Council. Noel Alamaya fell ill today, and so I'm standing in for her tonight. We had two expiring terms on the Diversity, Equity, and Access DEIAC. We advertised late in 2024, received five applications. All five candidates were interviewed. Interviews were conducted by, were attended by Noel Alamaya. Committee members Tony Lai and Viviana Garibay conducted the interviews. Unfortunately, we weren't able to make calendars work for Councilees on Geary's, so he was unable to participate. The committee is recommending appointments of two members for terms expiring December 31, 2029, Helen Dunford and Andrea Denise.
Do I have a motion to consider Resolution 2025-03?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Payne, a second from Counselor Geary. Any discussion?
Counselor Geary?
Yes, I was invited. I was intended. I had a poorly timed roof leak over some valuable mechanical equipment in a home I was building for part of my professional life, so I was not able to go. I have since met and met with both of these people. They attended the previous meeting not as members, but as, you know, hey, we interviewed. We wanted to be here. I was able to carry on a conversation with them. They seemed to be well-equipped to represent us and represent a wide range from the community on this Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. So I feel comfortable not being in the interview process, but that we have two great candidates.
Right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, may I ask Counselor Geary a question? Who again was on the interview panel if we didn't have anyone from this group?
It was two sitting members, Tony Lai and, I believe it was Nancy... Viviana... Viviana Garibaldi? I'm... Viviana. So two sitting members of the DEIAC.
Okay.
And staff was present.
And Noel.
And Noel. Okay. That was my question.
Then it was to be me, but I had like an hour before. Couldn't make it.
That's completely understandable.
But, yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
My apologies to Viviana, if she's listening, for just obliterating her name there. Yeah. We call her Vivvy, so I've become too acquainted with calling her Vivvy.
Is she in the room?
No.
Okay. Claudia, can you please take a poll?
Counselor Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tokolski?
Nay.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Aye.
And the resolution passes with a vote of five to one.
And did we already... Neither one are in the room tonight?
Not in person.
Okay.
Maybe if you do Zoom, I don't know.
Okay. Now it's just time to consider Resolution 2025-04, a resolution approving the appointment of a new Finance Director. I call on Vicki Hedges, our Human Resources Director.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is recommending the hire of Katie Henry for our new Finance Director, Catherine Henry. We started the recruitment process in October of 2024 and extended a conditional offer on December 24, 2024. One note I would like to make is the change to the start date for Katie. The resolution says January 27, but we're pushing that to February 3.
So if we move, would we need to move an amended motion to reflect February 3?
Yes. 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 Yes.
I've heard yes about four times. You still need to say yes? Yes.
Okay. And do I have anyone that would like to do that?
I would move to approve Resolution 2025-04 with the amendment that the new Finance Director's service would commence February 3, 2025.
Second. Second from Counselor Payne. Any additional discussion? Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, thank you. So, as has been publicly noted, I was very much in objection with the process of hiring our Police Chief and now the Finance Director. The last meeting of 2024, second-to-last meeting of 2024, was a really packed meeting, so I didn't express why I changed from a no vote to a yes vote that day. So I do want to make that clear on the record. The reason for that transition was because it became clear to me that a offer had been made via a phone conversation weeks before, and that offer was made contingent to the passing of a background examination. I don't know the exact terminology. I don't want to get that wrong. And that was accepted. In my world, that qualified as a contract, verbal contract, but a contract, and put me in a position where voting no would potentially put me in putting the city or saying I'm okay with putting the city in breach of contract. I wasn't willing to do that, so I switched my vote to yes. So for the record, that's why that happened. Moving forward to this vote, I'm going to read Section 11 of our Charter. Appointed Administrative Officers. Additional officers of the city shall be municipal judge, a city recorder, a C3 city manager, a city attorney, a director of public works, a chief of police, a fire chief, a treasurer, which is now our Finance Director, and such other officers as the council deems necessary. Each of these officers shall be appointed and may be renewed by a majority of the council. That means that the process of appointing these officers is owned and belongs to the council, and the council did not get that opportunity. As a result, I will be voting no, and I'm asking, Mayor, that going forward, we at some point in time have this conversation. I took an oath today. In that oath, I said I was going to uphold the Charter and the ordinances. I have just read to you what this Charter says. If I'm going to take this oath seriously, I must uphold to this Charter. So I have to vote no. I'm asking my fellow councillors in all humility to please stand with me and get this thing straightened out so that going forward, this process follows the Charter. That way, we can, going forward, ensure that we're doing things the way they're supposed to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be interested in... Speaking directly into the mic. I'm interested in Mr. Leitenberg's legal analysis. I appreciate Counselor Chenoweth's opinion and perspective, but I think really we need to be hearing from the city attorney when there's this type of allegation of impropriety, I guess I would say. Was there any part of these processes that, in your mind, didn't adhere to the Charter? I've heard you say that there are multiple ways to facilitate these processes, so I'd just like to hear from you on this.
Thank you. That is... The way that you described that has been indeed my analysis. With regard to this paragraph and with regard to the resolution in front of you, it mirrors the process that we've seen in some previous appointments in that the language of this resolution and the business of this resolution carry out the requirements of the Charter. What happens before and in a hiring process is not here clear in the Charter. I think that there is leeway as to how that gets effectuated, but there is nothing in here that calls out a different process, nothing in Charter, that is. How that pre-appointment plays out, not being written into Charter, can be... I don't want to speak completely, just off the cuff. A full analysis could be appropriate here if you requested that. I'd be happy to put a presentation together. But pre-hiring portions of this can be delegated. They can be delegated formally or informally. I think that there is a good argument that the somewhat confusing, competing Charter provision about the city manager's supervisory authority and the same provisions being repeated in the city manager's employment contract speak to him playing a role in that. I think also the period of time during which this was in front of council and we indicated that this process was being accomplished, that we were conducting this in a certain way, can also be an informal delegation of those same pre-hiring things that aren't spoken to in the Charter. All that is a long-winded way of saying, yes, I believe all of the necessary requirements of the Charter have been met in this instance and in this hiring and in those ones that we've discussed previously.
Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Just to clarify. So what you were describing is the earlier meetings that we had when we discussed what the process would be, the fact that we were going into a process of hiring it, created some formal... Some form of council action. The manner by which the process is undertaken from that point, there is ambiguity related to that in the Charter, but the effectuation of the signing of these contracts is happening with council vote.
That's correct.
May I ask some questions?
Just one sec. Dan, were you asking a question? I want to make sure. I thought I saw something.
I will. I have a comment, but I will hold. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Chenoweth?
So it's my recollection that in the hiring of Finance Director, the entire sum total of comments made from the staff came from Director Hedges, who said, "Make sure you mark on your date the following date for a meet and greet." And that was the sum total of the communication that came from the staff. Is your recollection any different?
Were you asking?
I'm asking city attorney.
I don't have a particular recollection.
So to argue then that the conversations given to us from the staff somehow created this process and put our stamp of approval on a process in which we were never actually expressed what that process was going to be, what it looked like, or how it was going to take place. I don't understand how we make that argument. That would be number one. The second point that I would like to make is when I read the confusing language that you referred to in Section 22 of our Charter, it reads, "The city manager shall have general supervision of the administrative affairs of the city and general control over all non-elected officers and employees of the city, excepting those of the Water and Light Department and Municipal Judge, and shall perform such other duties as may be prescribed by the council." Nor in there do I see the word "appoint." Is it your argument that the same people who wrote this document, who created this Charter, who used the word "appoint" clearly as a power delegated to the council, were then through some allusion alluding to the same power being given to the city manager? And if they had wanted the city manager to have that job, for whatever reason, chose not to include the word "appoint"? not to include the word appoint within that passage?
Okay. I'm going to just interrupt for a moment. I appreciate your points, and I am just going to say that as the mayor, I, obviously, there is different views on how to read the Charter. I'm included in that, that it is not a clear Charter, and I think that I would like to put together a Charter Advisory Committee, and just because there's confusion and the easiest way to deal with it is to review it and talk about it and clarify it. So I would like to put a committee together. I will be doing that to review the Charter, to make sure that we are all understanding for the next go-round as to how it's going to be. So a Charter or rather resolutions to go with a Charter, but we'll have that discussion to make sure that we all up here are on the same page.
And I did start...
I think that's very important.
And Madam Mayor, I did start with that. I do think we need to have a discussion whether it's done through a committee, whether it's done by us on this dais, but I again want to stress, I think, I'm hopeful that this council will hear my concerns and say no to this. Thank you.
I hear your concerns, and for me, it's whenever somebody has a question and a concern, if we can't answer it, then we need to figure, continue, and make sure we answer it so that all of us up here are on the same page because we're all trying to get to the same place. So I appreciate that. Obviously, attorney, you're going to be part of that, and so we'll get through that. Okay? Any other comments up here? Just one second. I'm going to get to Counsel Tokolski.
Yeah, so regardless of process, process aside, outside of the Police Department and our just Public Works Department, which provides water and utilities for our citizens, I think the Finance Department is extremely important to staff, and I do support this appointment. I think it's important also to relieve Director Burke of the duties of interim Finance Director as well, so that he can actually do his job to the fullest extent. So I do support this regardless of the actual process or perceived lack thereof.
Counsel Peralta? Okay. Any other comments before we move forward with the vote? And again, I appreciate everybody's input. I think it's very important, and we will, we will get it taken care of. Claudia?
Counsel Cunningham?
Aye.
Counsel Tokolski?
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Nay.
Counsel Payne?
Nay.
Counsel Geary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Aye.
And the resolution passes by a vote of four to two.
Thank you. Is Katie with us tonight at all? Nope? Okay. Okay, the last thing is, staff has requested to remove ordinance number 5156 from today's agenda and be brought back at a future date. So for now, I will now adjourn the City Council meeting at 8:02 PM.